Okay.
You're already recording?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Council, we have been set. Then I will call this. It is 6:00 PM on Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. I'll call this special meeting of the Berry City Council to order. First item of business is adjustments to the agenda. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two adjustments. One is to add, I don't know if you want it on consent or an action item, but is to add a, I emailed the council about an authorization for the manager to execute an extension on the Prospect Heights option. So I mentioned to the council that our current option expires October 15th, 2025, which is beyond the date of the CDB GDR application. However, to strengthen the application, we're, it's more, it's stronger with a longer term option. So I'm requesting authorization to negotiate an extension up to 12 additional months. And if you approve that, I would, we would need ratification at the September 30th meeting. So that's a, that's a long one. I don't know where people want to place it.
I'm, I'm fine with it on consent. What's your pleasure, council?
So moved.
Okay. Don't need a motion. We'll just put it on.
So that would be item 4D. And then we would remove item 8H little i, which is Resolution 2025 dash 24, which is a project that, as I also emailed the council, won't be pursued in this round of funding due to the other applications we have in. So those are the two adjustments at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much, council. Any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, then we'll move along. First, we'll move to visitor and communications. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. That's always a good sign. Council will move on to the consent agenda. We'll be approving the minutes for the meeting of 9:00, 9:25. I believe you do have a few permits for us, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes. We need to ratify the Workers Over Billionaire event that happened Thursday, the 18th at City Hall Park. We need to approve, or hopefully approve, the light radio concert. The band is Unspoken. They're set to perform Saturday, the 27th from 4:00 to 9:00 PM at the Berry Auditorium. They will also be using a partial parking lot. They have food trucks and they have a bouncy house. And then Sunday, October 5th, in the Courier Park, Salvation Army would like to hold the church service from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 1:30 PM, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you did receive those, council, via email. So in addition, we'll be authorizing the manager to execute the contracts. Those are also in your packet. $47,775 for a wastewater treatment plant utility truck, $56,880 for an actuated valve replacement at the water treatment plant, and $75,200 for a new hybrid police department cruiser. Yes?
Could I ask a question about that?
Of course.
For the wastewater treatment plant truck, the 47775, it looks like it does not include the trade-in. Are we trading in the 2017 truck?
Yes, we are. And I can, we, that will be netted out of, of the, the final cost. I believe the...
The invoice says 39575?
Oh, yes. Thank you, councilor. So that's the...
That would be the actual...
That would be the actual total. Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to understand that.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that just to get it in the minutes?
Thirty-nine, five, seventy-five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so rather than forty-seven, seven, seventy-five, we'll substitute that number.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, council, we'll add item D, which is to negotiate a option agreement, an extension of the current option agreement with FECTO for the land up off Prospect Street. You mentioned that that would be approximately 12, up to 12 months.
Up to 12 months, up to 12 additional months from the expiration.
Okay, got it. Council, any questions or discussion? And a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those... Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just have one quick question about the minutes. Um, sorry, sorry, sorry. Under section, item seven, the TIFF project, Stevens Branch Apartments, do we need to, it says that we, it's going to be brought to the voters for a bond funding? Is that, that was based on our approval from VEPSE? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
No, in order to, in order to encumber the TIFF district, in order for the TIFF district to release money, voters have to authorize it.
No, no, but didn't we have to get our...
VEPSE approved.
VEPSE had to approve it first. Does that need to be in the minutes, that that happened?
Um, I don't know if we need it. I don't, we can add it with, with your approval. I don't think it's required. I think if it was, Carol would have flagged it for me.
Okay.
But if, I, I have no, no problem adding it.
Okay.
If the council concurs with that.
All right. I just wasn't sure if it needed to be in there.
Check with Carol. Yeah. I just don't want to mess, I, I have no objection to it, but I don't know if you're...
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're not supposed to for some reason.
Yeah.
And when it comes to TIFF districts and VEPSE, they've got pretty particular rules, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I didn't, no objection. Any other discussion, council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Consent agenda is approved. Council will be approving the city warrants, will be approving the week of 9:24, 25, and ratifying the week of 9:17, 25. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was a weak little aye. Silence is consent. And those opposed?
Oh, no.
Your abstention is noted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. The warrants are approved. Ms. City Clerk, it's all yours. I stalled it as best I could.
No, no worries. I just have one thing to mention. We did receive the CBCC, Central Vermont Career Center ballots. Yesterday, we are going to start getting out the absentee requests that we have already received. Some people want, wanted or requested all ballots for the year. So we're in the process of getting those mailed out. If you were not included in the first round, you can always request the ballots to be mailed to you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that is it.
Any questions of the clerk, council? Okay, then we will move right along. Liquor and cannabis control board is in session. I believe we have one application to approve.
We have a catering application, Pine Birch LLC. They're doing a wedding reception. It's a private reception at a home, 210 Hill Street, October 11th. We will be serving wine and beer only. And I just asked that you approve them coming into the city for the first time. They are a first-time vendor for the city of Berry.
Yeah, and normally, council, when we issue a liquor license or even a catering license for the first time, or a liquor license anyway, we have the applicant come in. I didn't think that was necessary. It's an event at a private home. You know, they are licensed, it does have everyone's approval, but it's not an event that's open to the public. So I didn't see the, I, I didn't see the need to have them come down from Burlington, visit with us for this. So just wanted to make that clear. So a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? A little more robust that time. Thank you. Liquor and cannabis control board is adjourned. Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Uh, not too much. I've been basically only doing CDB GDR. So that's the only real thing I have to report on this week, besides the fact that the paving was done. So those are very short report this week, just because it's been basically CDB GDR nonstop. So, but paving is complete, and there was, I think, a very successful, impactful paving season with the streets we were able to get done, and very happy so far with the early results on the, on the product. So that's it for me tonight.
And sorry about the traffic jams.
Yes.
It admittedly got a little tough.
Yes.
Throughout the city, especially because of the Quarry Hill one. It was just a, you know, it was just a tough traffic pattern to manage. I found out the hard way. I left for lunch. It took me 45 minutes to get to Nelson Street, and it took me 45 minutes to get back. But sorry, by the way, Quarry Hill looks great.
Yep.
They're doing a great job. We appreciate them.
Could I?
Yes, of course.
A follow-up question, or a follow-up comment. The train crossing construction is going to be starting?
Yep.
So we probably will be in store for more traffic jams? Just word to the...
Yes, they will be. I haven't received any further updates in terms of the, the specific timing, or if I have, they're in my email, because I've been doing CDB GDR. But yes, I, I think it'll be, it'll unfortunately be disruptive, but also important work.
Yeah.
They're doing, at least with Hill Street, you can kind of get around it. You know, you can go down, this one was tough, because it was Route 14, and it just backed traffic up, you know, everywhere. You know, the one thing that I could ask, I know they're on a tight schedule, they have to get it done, but if they could let the kids get to school, you know, that's, that's kind of a pretty early bus by, when are they usually at school by, councilor?
So 8:45 is when they have to be to the school. They start their runs at 8:15, 8:20.
Yeah. I know it's tough, but you know, that's virtually every bus in the city comes down that way and hits that, hits both those crossings. So if they could do, if we could just work with them, that would be, that would really be awesome. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, then council, we will move on to new business. We're a few minutes early, but the hearings will run concurrently, just for your information. The manager will present some information. We're actually going to have eight separate, I will open and close eight separate hearings. You have eight items there. That will give you the opportunity to consider and vote on the resolutions individually. And also, if folks are here to, to speak to any of the specific projects, it'll give them the opportunity to do that as well. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
Couple minutes early, but kick it off.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I have some presentation that will provide the broad overview, and by the time I finish that, it'll, it'll be quick. We will be right at 6:15 when we can start the first actual hearing. So this will just give you the, the, the big picture before we get into the individual hearings and resolutions. So this is for the benefit of folks in the audience and public watching. Council, you've seen this. This is a huge opportunity, 67-plus million dollars coming to Vermont with a large majority of it allocated to our, our communities, Washington County and some other hard-hit communities from the 2023 flood. The timeline, so there's two rounds of applications. The first round is due on Tuesday. Decision, and I, decision is, is a heavy word in that sense, that the board is going to meet on November 20th. We may or may not hear around that date, or sometime after that date is when we'll hear award decisions. There's a second round. There are dates published on the website, but we've also learned that those, those dates may also move. So I just, you know, for sake of, you know, clarity, there's this, you know, anticipated second round, and, and at some point, we'll have firmer dates on what those second round applications will be. We had pre-applications that were submitted on August 5th, and per the grant rules, the federal grant rules, the funds must be spent and projects must be completed six years after the award, which was, I believe, August 16th, thereabouts. So we have six years roughly from, from August. And these, these projects that we'll discuss tonight, you know, they've, they've been discussed at various council meetings, at, at forums. These are, I think, by and large, you know, concepts that we've, we've, we've talked about general, broadly. And going to the, the overall picture, so we're, you know, we have three types of projects that we're applying for funding for, and the housing is by and large the biggest chunk of it. We have 23 million dollars and change requested in funding for housing projects, and I'll go through what those are. The next biggest bucket is infrastructure, which is 3.5 million dollars. And then there's planning grants, and those have gotten smaller, and I'll explain why that was as well. And then we've added, just for your awareness, sort of an administrative single audit line. So this is a huge federal grant. You know, typically in these grants, they, it's encouraged or allowed up to 10% set aside for administration, project management, and then the single audit fees. So we're, we're below that 10%, so that we can have a lot of that money in the programming. But if you also think about it, you know, it looks like a big number there, but you know, 600, 685,000 dollars over a six-year grant period is really pretty reasonable. And so it, it looks like a, a big chunk of money for the administrative project management side, but it's, given the scope of these projects, it's, we probably could have dumped more money into that, but we, we left that in the programming. The, the total estimated amount comes out to 27 million dollars, 692,033, and we are limited, we're limited, we're capped at 10% above what we publicly warned this hearing for. And we are using just about every one of those dollars. So if you recall, our initial estimates were closer to the 25 million dollar range, and I'll explain why we're closer to this amount now, which is 10% above that threshold.
Could I, oh, yes, I'm looking to get in, number one, and just wanted to ask a question, make a point.
Sure.
I don't recall, I mean, obviously, this is a big ask for the city. There are basically 55 million dollars available countywide in Washington, Lemoore County. So obviously, we're being very aggressive. I think we, we need to be. Some folks have said, well, aren't, why aren't you asking for more for infrastructure and for mitigation? Why aren't you asking for, you know, for example, 10 million dollars for flood mitigation? And we know there's a lot of flood mitigation work to be done. Do you recall what the split? I mean, our, our project in terms of category, it pretty much follows what the state did. In the ACCD, in the 55 million dollars, as they categorize things, the state leaned heavy into housing. I'm thinking it was, Teddy, you might remember, 75%? It, it was, it was somewhere around 75%. So obviously, of the 55 million dollars, the state has allocated 75% towards housing and a much lesser amount towards infrastructure, planning, and then, and the rest of it. So what we tried to do is try to make our applications mirror what the state was doing on a countywide basis.
Correct. That, thanks for, that's a great point, Mayor. And, and even the infrastructure projects are, you know, heavily incentivized to be towards housing as well. So that's a big focus on, on the whole grant picture. And our, our, we've probably skewed slightly more, I think, that the additional money that we've added since the last time is slightly more to the housing, but our, certainly our first application was right along those same proportions as the state was, was seeking. Yeah.
Teddy was exact state representative. I think just another piece of context for that is the 75% et cetera breakdown for housing et cetera was also a reflection of the other monies that exist for specifically infrastructure work and flood mitigation, such as like the hazard mitigation grants, et cetera. So it's not saying that the state or the city is not going to invest in flood mitigation infrastructure. It's that there are plenty of other pots of money that exist for that exact thing. So for this round of funding, it made sense to invest heavily in the housing that we all have.
Exactly. Thank you, and great point.
So this is just, again, high-level summary of the housing projects, and we'll have a chance to talk about, have a hearing about each of these projects individually. Number one's Prospect Heights. This, the ask here is 5.2 million dollars, and the project comprises of building the infrastructure to develop a subdivision on a 30-acre site. This is, this would create 91 new units. We, we think actually with the recent executive order, it could be more. But right now, the plans we have are for 91, based on the existing rules. And this would complement an existing grant that we've received of 2.85 million dollars from Northern Northern Borders Regional Commission and $750,000 secured in this, by the state. The second project would be North End Redevelopment and this project now includes the following components, which is nine buyouts to create floodplain along 302, four acquisitions, that would be for redevelopment, and eight elevations to protect existing structures. So those would be the components of this plan now. And there's a really important distinction between buyouts and acquisitions. Buyouts can be, the price for a buyout can be the pre-flood value. Acquisitions will be current market value. That's grant rules, but the acquisitions also have the important component that they allow us to redevelop. So we have some, fortunately, some clustered parcels that would, that would allow for some, hopefully more, you know, multifamily units that would, net replacement of the properties that were there, that are there now. And then finally, the 355 North Main Street, this is the big new component that I emailed the council about and you may have read in the Times-Aregis. So this would be a $10 million project. This is the max grant award under this program and this, this project in our grant application would support development of a 48 to 60-unit building, in a multi-story building, 355 North Main Street. You probably know what it's, Lenny Walgreens Plaza. And so that's the summary of the housing projects. The infrastructure projects are, I think, well-known to all of us. This is, these are two of the top three that were selected during the river process and that's the Willie Street Bridge project, which is to widen the bridge, create some adjacent floodplain on 572 North Main, and also Harrington Avenue debris rack, which is to also expand the floodplain on Harrington Avenue, redesign the debris rack so that it allows the water to stay in the channel while we're still capturing debris coming down Gunner's Brook. And then the planning grants, one is for the stormwater upgrades, $250,000 and one for Courier Park Potash Brook mitigation. And so I mentioned at the, at the top that these, this is where we took some funding down to stay within our threshold. These were initially planned at $1 million for stormwater and $500,000 for Potash Brook. Realistically, as planning grants, those amounts were probably high anyway because that didn't, it didn't include any construction. And so we have scaled these down to keep within our budget. And what this would do, the stormwater upgrades would take the results of the hydrology and stormwater study that we've commissioned to help us design and engineer the highest priority projects that come out of that, those studies. And Courier Park Potash Brook would, you know, also be a design engineering of that specific neighborhood and the challenges they've had in taking the, you know, information we've taken from the residents of the area to create a, design and engineer a mitigation plan. Could be floodplain, upsizing culverts, debris catchers, the whole gamut. So that, I think, Mayor, that brings us, we can open the first hearing and...
Okay. You'll have the opportunity to ask questions regarding each project within each project hearing. So at this time, I'll open the hearing on the Prospect Heights Housing Project. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Stanek, how are you? Come right up, of course.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Ed Stanek. I'm a resident of Pleasant Street, taxpayer, and a resident for about 41 years on Pleasant Street. I'll be brief. I asked the council to incorporate by reference into the record for this resolution, a detailed memorandum I wrote on September 22nd, provided to the council members, in which I provided a detailed discussion about significant issues concerning this particular resolution and current application. In summary, the memorandum raised three broad issues of concern. First, the potential cost to the taxpayers, what seems to be probable improvements, substantial improvements, to municipal water supply, sewage disposal, and stormwater runoff infrastructure. The costs have not been quantified. Really seems to be an open-ended question to my mind, the burden to be assumed by the city taxpayer. Second area of concern has to do with the physical characteristics of the site. As indicated in the due diligence report for the council by DeWolf Engineering, the site, is a site for three Class II significant wetlands. Class II significant wetlands have a broad range of values that are protected, not the least of which is the retention of stormwater. My reading of the application is that the Fitzgerald Environmental Firm seems to be prepared to submit an application under the state's existing wetland rules. However, and this is of significant concern for several reasons, it appears to me that the city may decide to proceed in reliance upon Executive Order 0625 issued on September 17th of this year by Governor Scott. There are aspects of that executive order which is a former permit administrator. I wholly support. Expediting administrative processes is critically important for moving house projects along. I have no problem with that. I have significant concerns, however, about the city's reliance upon the executive order's provisions, which basically bend the state's existing wetland rules. Won't come into more detail unless you have questions. It's explained in my memorandum. However, I'm pretty sure that that aspect of the executive order is going to be subject to litigation because of the challenge to the existing wetland rules, which ran through the Administrative Procedures Act and have been in place for quite a number of years. I think it would be less than prudent to proceed to final design on this project in reliance upon the executive order regarding waiving the wetland rules. Finally, my understanding of the proposal, again, based upon the DeWolf Due Diligence Report, is that the project seems to be proceeding in reliance upon a Development Review Board decision issued in 1990 for a previous development proposed for the project site. That's 35 years ago. My understanding is that there is an opinion authored by a former zoning administrator for the city, I forget exactly when, probably 15 years ago, in which the former zoning administrator concluded that the DRB decision had not expired, maybe never expires. I find that astounding, having dealt with land use law in the state of Vermont for 32 years, that a Development Review Board decision, 35 years old, in a municipality which had the good sense to upgrade its zoning and zoning subdivision bylaws during that 35-year period, that this project would proceed in reliance upon that 35-year-old permit. I think it's foolhardy to proceed in that way and that is ripe for litigation, reliance upon a DRB decision of that age. So in conclusion, I urge the council to consider either tabling this resolution because there are outstanding factual questions which have no answers. In the alternative, if you decide not to table it, I suggest that you not act affirmatively on this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I appreciate it. And Ed, I'm going to, I'm going to enter this, you said you wanted the September 22nd, 25?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'll have that entered into the record.
Thank you.
And, and thank you. As I said in my email, I've read both of your memoranda. You make me think, Ed. And when people stop and make you think, that makes it better. I mean, I think, and you can sit or return, whichever, but you know, I want to respond because you took the time, not only to write the memorandum, but also to be here. You know, some of the questions that you raised, you know, I did ask around today. No one is aware of any lawsuit that has been filed pursuant to the executive order. Of course, the executive order is, what, a week old? So that's not really surprising. And also, we live in a very diverse state. There are some folks who are thrilled with the executive order and there are some folks who are less than thrilled. I tend to be in the camp of the former. I am thrilled with the executive order. In our application and in our planning to date, we have not relied on the wetlands rules with the executive order because when we were doing that, when we were putting that together, it didn't exist. We were, we were still going by the existing rules. The effect that that had is, in the DeWolf Report, it reduced the number of possible units from, I believe, 125, 126 to 90, 91. Obviously, you know, existing buffers, if you have buffers, it reduces the land that you can develop. So I think a lot of those questions will be answered and I think a lot of those questions will be answered within the permitting process. As far as the, you know, the opinion of the zoning director, obviously, we'll have to revisit that. We want to make sure that that's a sound opinion and if it has to be re-permitted, it'll have to be re-permitted. And then, you know, to your last point about infrastructure costs, you know, I agree with you. You know, those contingencies are always a concern. What we heard is that the domestic wastewater system, there was actually a suggestion, and I'm not an engineer, that said, because now, you know, when this project was originally permitted, it was permitted for X gallons of domestic waste. Now, because we use 1.6-gallon toilets, the engineer actually suggested that the, that the use of the domestic wastewater system would be less. We'd actually be sending less gallons and we did have capacity. I think we may, in fact, have to upsize some of the city's services. That would only make sense. But what I would point out is that, you know, assuming on a per-unit basis, and I'll use 100 just to make the math easy, assuming on a per-unit basis that each lot generates $30,000 in revenue and residential lots, in talking to a realtor yesterday, residential lots today are generating around $75,000. I used a very conservative number of 30 because we recognize that it will be a mix of affordable and market-rate housing. There may be some folks out there who want to build a home, but they can't afford $75,000 for a lot, so we intend to slide the scale a little bit. If that number holds up, that's $3 million in additional revenue. In addition, if we use fully built-out, that same 100 units, not 90, not 125, just 100 to make the math easy, the municipal taxes on that, on each dwelling unit, assuming a $200,000 assessment, would be around, you know, around $4,200. And I, I don't do this all from memory, Ed, so it would, it would generate, so assuming, again, fully built-out annually, it would generate around $450,000 in additional municipal revenue. So, you know, those points that you've raised, we've considered those as well. If we have to make, say, a $2 million investment in municipal upgrades, the lot sales, which are not included in the grants, in the net grants, those would more than pay for that. So, you know, listen, we need housing. We desperately need housing that is not in the floodway. We need all types of housing, workforce and affordable and subsidized. And so all I can tell you is that we'll do our best to make good decisions.
Just some brief responses, if I may.
Of course.
You know, I did back at the envelope estimate too as to what would be the potential economic benefits to the city. I also came up with the range of a total of $500,000, $600,000 per year in property taxes, but I couldn't figure out, obviously, what's that compared to because there are no analyses of the potential cost to the city for the improvements to the waste line, the stormwater system, and the water supply system. So I'm comparing apples to the unknown as to what benefits are versus the burdens on the city. And secondly, you know, the comment about the permitting process, it's awfully murky to me what permitting process this project will go through. It's pretty clear to me that the city will probably apply under the exemption of Act 181 from last year, and this to be declared a priority, whatever the buzz phrase is, Teddy, a priority housing project exempt therefore from Act 250 review. It's exempt from Act 250 review and it's exempt from the DRB review. The only permitting review that's going to take place, probably of any substance, is stormwater permitting. And I note that the plans appear to show on a site where now the wetlands are holding back runoff, once the site is turned into impurpious surfaces, the project requires a detention basin for stormwater sized for a 200-year storm. Not a 50-year storm, not a 100-year storm, a 200-year storm of water being stored perched right above Prospect Street. That's of great concern. However, the permitting process for the construction general permit and stormwater permits are really not public participation processes. I mean, I've been involved in these processes. There's no public participation in that. There'll be no Act 250 review. There will be probably no DRB review. So I'm just commenting on permitting processes. There's really not going to be much opportunity for public scrutiny. This is the opportunity for public scrutiny and I'm simply suggesting there are a lot of unknowns. I know you're really good at doing the financial analysis. I can't hold a candle to it, but I just wanted to comment on, I'm not sure about the benefit of, the comparison of the benefits to the cost because we don't know what the costs are.
True. Thank you. Any, I'm sorry, any questions for Mr. Stanek?
No.
Oh, okay. Or comments related to the Prospect Heights hearing? Oh, Amy, you, I'll get right to you. Amy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a couple thoughts related to his comments. Maybe I'm not understanding, but I think generally, provided there is capacity to serve for water and for wastewater, new infrastructure, once it's built, actually subsidizes repairs on the old infrastructure because presumably you're building it right the first time. And as long as it's built right the first time, as those people are paying their water bills, they're actually going to be paying for other parts of the water system to get improved. But maybe I didn't understand his point. As far as the permitting, I would assume this would go through drinking water permitting, which has a public comment period. I'm not familiar with the wastewater permits personally, but I think, given that we're under an AOD, those would have a public comment period. And I think just given the federal funding and particularly having a Northern Borders Regional Commission, if not other federal funding, won't it have to go through National Environmental Policy Act compliance review, environmental review? Most federal funding projects have to go through additional environmental review, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. Sorry. Thanks, Amy. Yes?
I want to just be clear. The money that we're asking for is to build infrastructure such as stormwater, water lines and that sort of thing for the development.
Correct.
And it doesn't take into account, as Mr. Stanek asked, the cost if we need to upsize our stormwater, if we need to upsize our municipal water. Do we have any idea if those, I mean, I'm reading through this letter that Mr. Stanek provided and it feels all a little bit squishy, like we don't really know. So at what point do we know?
You want to grab that one if you want me to?
You can start.
So if you read the DeWolf Report, some of the questions were addressed in there. They were not definitive answers because it was more of a due diligence report than it was. It wasn't a final engineering report. So we currently have a RFP out, I think, for final engineering and that's where that determination is made.
Okay.
What I do know is that if we, if council decides not to proceed with this, you know, then essentially, this project remains about 50% funded. So Ed, I appreciate and respect you, but I will not be changing my vote on this resolution. It will be to support it because I think as, like I said, as we develop those costs, when you look at sale price of lots, when you look at municipal income taxes generated, it would have to be an awfully big number and nothing has suggested, even in the DeWolf Report, while they questioned, you may need some upsizing, their advice was to proceed, was to continue moving forward. In other words, there was nothing that DeWolf could point at to say, gee, these costs are going to be in excess of $10 million and it's just not going to be worth it. It won't be cost-effective to the city. And the only way to find that out, to find out what that cost is, if there is any cost at all, I have to believe there's going to be some cost with stormwater, but if there's any cost at all, the only way to find that out is to proceed with the CDBGDR grant.
And my other question is regarding the 200-year stormwater retention facility, pond, whatever it is, is I, that just seems very like a recipe for disaster, honestly.
Well, right above our homes, there's a stormwater retention pond that was not built for the 200-year flood and that's sitting right above our homes. Now, that didn't fail and that didn't send, I mean, obviously, wherever Berry City is a valley and you get water that's going to cascade off the hills and some of it comes from Berry Town, some of it comes from Washington, some of it, you know, it comes from all over. I mean, we are a valley and the Stevens Branch is a major tributary.
Yeah.
But again, you know, we rely, when you look at these permitting process, and I don't agree, disagree with you, Ed, that, you know, when it comes to stormwater permits and things like that, there's not a lot of opportunity for public discussion because it's science-based and you have certain, you obviously have certain standards that you have to meet and those standards primarily are designed to protect not only our infrastructure... those standards primarily are designed to protect not only our infrastructure in the cities and towns, but also the people who live there.
Yeah, and I would say, in response to that, the thing that concerns me is that we're, we're changing those rules by executive order, and that is even more concerning. So, I, I won't support this particular application, but I think my vote is probably negligible, so it doesn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I just kind of want to remind us that one of our goals for the city has been to build housing and to increase revenue. And while there are definitely some questions that need to be answered with this project, almost 100 units going online for our community, to give people a place to build, to give people a place to live, grow, and play, I mean, this is one of the responsibilities that the voters have put on us. And yes, it's an investment, it's going to cost money, but who is currently building housing? Nobody, because of the cost of housing. So, we're taking a bold statement in this, we're doing this, and we've been working on this for several years. And it really would be kind of a disappointment to say that it's, it's half-funded and not to continue with this project, because there are many people that are looking at this project, saying, wow, you know, I could find myself living in Berry. This could be an opportunity for me to live and to buy a home. And so, these are one of the many opportunities that we're trying to bring to our community, to bring people in, to fill jobs, to bring into this economy, and really just fill that tax base that we're also trying to get from, that investment that's going to keep on giving, because once you build that infrastructure, once you build the units, the taxes come online. So, then we're also going to be getting that money in return.
Thank you. Didn't see you come in, Counselor.
Apologies.
Let the record reflect the Counselor's question, join the meeting. They got a suck right by. Anyone else? Yes? Would you mind, yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming up here, that would be great. And if you could state your name for the record, that would be awesome.
Good evening, my name's Chris Dayton, I, I've lived here in Berry in the same place on Cleveland Ave for about 20 years, well, for exactly 20 years, almost. My question is, of the housing units that we're trying to build, how many of those, is there an idea of how many of those are going to be for low-income and subsidized housing?
Well, you want to grab that one? So, 70%?
70%, and, yeah, and about 60, about two-thirds of them are multifamily, and one-third is single-family roughly. Is that roughly right?
Yeah.
And the, the rest of it being, I think, the word you used was like workforce housing?
Market rate workforce, call it, yeah, sure.
Affordable for somebody living off a reasonably decent wage.
Yeah, and, and, and not to interrupt you, sir, but just, just with this program, so I believe 70% of the units have to serve a population at, what is the percentage? Pat, I think Pat is online.
Yeah, Pat's on 80%.
Pat, you want to jump in? And so, I get this right? I think all of you know Pat, from the state of Vermont?
80% AMI, yeah.
Yeah, 80% of average median income, state median income, which, it varies per family size, but it's not subsidized, voucher, Section 8, low-income housing. It's moderate-income housing. And Nicholas, I believe you have some numbers on that.
I do, I can, I can share them.
You want to, you got them off the top of your head, Pat?
I have them right here in the sheet.
Because it's a Washington County number, not, not a Berry City number, so it's, it was actually a much higher number than, when I heard the number was actually much higher than I thought it would be, because it's a, it's a Washington County number, not a Berry City number.
Correct.
So, for example, someone, a nurse working at the hospital that live here, so.
One person, do you have them, Pat?
Yeah, for a one-person household, 80% of median income is $59,040. For a two-person, it's $67,520. For a three-person household, it's 79, $75,920. At a four-person household, it's $84,320. And for a five-person household, it's $91,120. That's the household income at 80%.
And the other piece I would add, and Pat, correct me if I misspeak, but the, you know, 70% of the total grant allocations have to support the 80% AMI households, because we're doing projects like 355, or proposing projects like 355 North Main Street, because Downstreet is applying for funding for the balance of the money they need for Seminary Street, which is all 100% meeting that threshold. This is a project where, you know, there could be some leeway one way or the other, and be at, at, at higher incomes if, if we wanted to go that route. Is that, Pat, did I, I didn't misspeak, is that?
You did not misspeak, and, and frankly, Berry, because Berry City actually has more than 60% of its population that are, or low to moderate income, I believe is the right name, you actually bring benefit to the state in administering its Community Development Block Grant Program, Disaster Recovery Program, by bringing in, like as you said, Nicholas, with Seminary Street, which is 100%. These projects, that'll be 70%. That'll help bend the needle, if you will, statewide for whatever grants may not have reached that 70%, if that's clear as mud, I hope not.
So, did you get a good answer to your question?
I, I think so, is, if I, if, without a, I do not have a math degree, by any means. Is it safe to assume that what I'm hearing is, around 20% of it will be low-income slash subsidized, or no?
No, so, the numbers that you just heard, where Pat was reciting, the single family, so 70% of the units have to serve that population. The other 30%, and Pat, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I've learned a lot over the past few months, Bill Gates could move in to the other, to one of the other units. But 70% of that population that Pat described has to be served by the project. They have to be able to afford it. Now, that doesn't mean, now, obviously, someone earning less than that could be served, because they're within that popu, you know, they're from zero to that upper limit.
Sure.
So, those are upper limits.
So, I guess my, a concern I have then is trying to bring higher-income people, if you will, that's a poor way to word it, but I, I, I think the sentiment's conveyed. With what we have going on now, do we really believe that we're going to bring that in?
Well, I mean, you heard the income limits, so a single person, remember, those are indexed for inflation, so by the time these units are, let's take a single person earning $60,000. In terms of the 30%, there are no income limits. So, 30% of the housing, you could have a, a single person making $150,000 a year, and they can live there. But 70% of the resulting units have to serve that population. And honestly, I don't judge people by the size of their wallet.
Sure.
But obviously, we want, what I've always said is that if 40% of our population in Berry City needs subsidized housing, and we only build, we build 100 units, wait, we only build 10 units of subsidized housing, we're not, we're not representing our population, we're not representing our constituents. So, I've always felt that the resulting housing units should reflect our city. And, and our city is single people making $60,000 a year, a couple, you know, making $70,000 a year, a family of three making $75,000 a year. I think that's a pretty fair representation of who we are as a city.
I wouldn't disagree at all, I would just, my concern is, we put the, we put the work in, or we, the work is put in to build it.
Mm-hmm.
Is it like the Field of Dreams, like if we build it, they will come? And, and are we fostering an environment where we're going to bring in people that make that money and will want to live here? And, and I don't mean that, that's not a shot at anyone, I'm just.
I don't take it that way. Look, you're, you're taking your time, you're taking your time to be here and ask questions. Thank you, sincerely. So, so, one of our partners, I'll just use an example, one of our partners who has sat at every board meeting, we, the Board of Prospect Heights, we meet every month, the hospital has had a representative at, and they have a representative that sits on the board. They've done that for three years, you know, they are invested. My understanding, in my conversations with the hospital, is that they're very interested in this project, because they have 200 vacancies at CBMC, and they're looking for workforce housing. And they're looking at building, you know, we've talked about, you know, a 16-unit building, you know, townhouse-style building, they're looking seriously at doing something like that. So, we have employers who are sitting at the table, saying, look, we need workforce housing. We also have Angie from Downstreet, who sits on our board. She obviously needs affordable housing, you know, we need a wide variety. So, you know, looking at the housing landscape, I don't think it is a Field of Dreams, you know, I think, we need housing, everybody knows that. And what we really need, in my opinion, we need quality housing. We've got a lot of older housing stock around the city, but we need, we need some newer housing stock. We need some housing stock where someone, you know, whether they're elderly or single, or they don't want a fixer-upper, you know, they want a turnkey home that they can just move into and then go to work. So, I, I think it's a good project.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Yes, of course.
I think what you're, what you're looking for, and I hate to use this term, but everyone's going to have skin in the game, so to speak. If we don't build it, they're going to go on the outskirts. You know, are you going to get people from Chittenden County, because they're going crazy with real estate? They may come, but like you said, with the nursing, the hospital, it's not for putting people in there like at a, you know, 100% no cost to them. Everyone's going to have a cost. Some are going to have a lot lower than others, but at least we're going to have, everyone will have skin in the game, which will bring money to the general fund.
And that, that's good, I mean, if you read what, you know, The Post, and you try to read through everything, that's, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, that's kind of what I.
All for helping people, and nurses, and anybody trying to come and, and move in here. I think we need to flood the city with some of that. But it, it reads like it could just be a bunch of housing projects that turn into ones we have now, that aren't exactly known as a lot.
But they've been cleaned up, the housing projects have been cleaned up quite a bit. Of course, it always going to have issues, but they're a lot better than they used to be, I know that for a fact.
That's good to hear, too.
Yeah.
What did you say your name was again? I'm sorry.
Chris Dayton.
What is it?
Chris Dayton.
Chris? You've lived here for 20 years?
Yes, sir.
Where the hell you been? You're, you're reasonable, you're well-spoken?
Yeah.
How come you've never been here before? And how come you're not volunteering on a committee?
No pressure. No pressure.
Think about it, Chris, think about it, man, think about it. Counsel, Counsel, did you have your hand up?
I did, I just, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do in the last couple months is turn Berry around by community conduct ordinance, by trying to just make sure that people know that Berry's not for business with drugs and, and the abuse and the violence and those kinds of things. We're trying to make sure that people can get the sort, resources that they need, trying to work through a lot of different things to make it so that these housing opportunities bring people that are positive, that say, look, I love Berry, I want to be in Berry, I want to be a positive influence in Berry, just trying to uplift the morale and just everything that we can to be a better community.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see anyone online, anyone in the audience or counsel wishing to comment further? So, I'm not hearing anyone, so I'm going to close the Prospect Heights Housing Project Hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-17.
移到
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Aye was aye, there were two nays, motion, resolution passes.
If you voted for it, if you could please sign it.
I'm sorry?
If you voted for it, if you could please sign it, I'm passing them around.
Yep, perfect. Okay, Counsel, I'll open the hearing for the North End slash Gateway Housing Project. Anyone wishing to comment, or? If you could state your name for the record, that would be great. Thank you.
I am Justine Macris. I live at 22 St. Hill Street, and I've lived there since 2010. I own the house, and Downstreet Housing owns the land. And we have been, I live there with my mom. We have been denied, we were denied back in June for an elevation grant of the property based on staff recommendations. Then, we, on August 29th, requested elevation for our property, and we were denied that because, oh, no, we got a map that said our, with our property being elevated, so we were really excited. And then, we were told that, we were denied due to lack of information, but since Downstreet Housing had informed the city that you could purchase our property, and we requested the name of the person from Downstreet, and that was spoken to about this, and we still have not gotten that name from the city manager, because we can't sell our property to the city. It's, you're not a low-income person, it's supposed to be low-income housing perpetuity. So, we, we refused the name of the person from Downstreet. We still haven't gotten anything from Downstreet that says we are able to sell our house to the city. We've been requesting that, but that's not about this. On 9/15, we expressed, again, our interest in being elevated rather than purchased, because we live in affordable housing, we don't want to lose that already. And we were refused because our property was being quote-unquote lumped together, and that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. On 9/23, we requested an elevation, again, rather than a buyout, and we, of course, didn't just get a response from that, even though we were told that we, all our multitude of questions had been answered. And so, I'm curious, what is the reason we're not getting an elevation?
I can address that, yeah, sure. So, the first time you didn't get an elevation was because we had, I think, a dozen applicants for three grants, and the city, and so you weren't the only ones who didn't get it, there were about eight other people who didn't get it.
And we requested the, like, the, how you determined that?
And I, yeah, and I shared with you that the council packet memo was available on our website, and I.
You told us it was staff recommendation.
Yeah, I did, right, right. And, and the packet, the packet, when the council approved the recommendations, was available, and we, we talked about the priorities that, and the tiers that we set for making those decisions. There were nine or so other properties that were told no.
Okay.
So, and, and in fact, everybody.
And were they included in this particular area?
Many of them were.
You were attempting, they were denied, or they were approved?
Some of them were, nobody was approved there.
Nobody was approved in this project area?
Nobody was approved in this project area.
Other people applied from this project area?
Yes.
Interesting.
And so, the, in terms of the, the elevations versus bias, I think we've, we've talked about, that, you know, the, the city has, you know, we, we've talked about having an interest in having redevelopable land in the North End, and this, and, and your property happens to be, you know, the same way that people who had buyouts approved, who were clustered along the river, and everyone else who requested a buyout was not approved, because the city had to sort of take into account the citywide mitigation value.
Was anyone in this area approved for a buyout?
Not until today.
From FEMA, or anyone?
Not until today, right, that's, these are the first buyouts approved in this area, and the reason that, that these are moving forward is because we now have some clarity about areas for redevelopment. So, the city had not, the city had not recommended any buyouts in this area until we knew where there might be lots for redevelopment and not be lots for redevelopment.
So, the buyouts decision were based solely on redevelopment?
No.
What were the other criteria?
The buy, the, well, the buyouts in this, in this neighborhood were determined after, after seeing where floodplain could be built to protect the housing in the area, where it was also clustered. There were also, we also looked at clusters of potential redevelopment sites, which your property is one of them. And then, sort of the, there were some scattered sites that not, not suitable for development, not priorities for development, that received the elevation site. So, your, your site happens to be, you know, clustered with a, a development potential location, and that's, that's a conflict between, you know, the, the same conflict we went through with every other city buyout, where there were 67 people who applied for buyouts, only 27 got them approved, because the city had to sort of set priorities about where, where we could make those decisions without impacting long-term vitality of the city. And so, there's 47 people who didn't get a buyout, because they happened to not be clustered along with somebody on the river, and there's areas where we're. be clustered along with somebody on the river. And there's areas where we're prioritizing acquisitions because they're, they're more suitable for development than other parts of that neighborhood.
So it is based on development?
Not entirely.
Well, you haven't given me any other criteria other than...
I talked, there's, there's, the citywide mitigation value is another priority.
What is that exactly?
So a property that's bought out, that's in the middle of a neighborhood, that's not adjacent to a river, has very little mitigation value to any other house around it. Because you can't direct floodwater to the middle of a neighborhood safely. So, you know, so that's why we focused on areas around the river. The buyouts in the North End, as you can see on this map, are focusing right along North Main Street with large parcels where it is safer and easier to direct floodwater than other parts of that neighborhood.
So what it, what it, is that online? Has that been online? Because I haven't seen...
Versions of this map have been presented at every meeting.
Ours was elevated, but that was because you didn't have, you hadn't heard from the land trust yet?
Yes. We weren't sure, we weren't sure if it could be.
So who at the land trust told you that it could be?
Somebody on, somebody on Downstreet staff. And I, I think what I probably told you was to contact, I typically...
And we have.
Yeah, and I typically don't give out individual staff. I encourage people to contact the organization, so.
And so now, okay, so you didn't do the buyout, you didn't do the first round of elevation. Why are you not considering us for elevation at this point?
Because your property, as I said, is, is an area that's more prime for development than, than others.
Even though the grant, like, prefers not disrupting housing, and we are very...
Acquisitions are allowed under the grant.
They're allowed, but they're not preferred.
I don't, I don't know if there's a preference one way or the other.
So...
Where did you get the information that they were not preferred? Because I, I haven't seen that.
It's online.
Right. Where on, I mean, I've read the, I've read the rules, I've read the regulations. I haven't...
It's there. I mean, I, can I quote it for you right now? No.
Okay.
Could I find it?
I can, I can get it from you later. No problem.
Possibly get it to you? Yeah.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
So I want it on the record that we want to be elevated. We don't wanna be bought out from the city. We want our property to be elevated so that we can continue our affordable housing in perpetuity as it was designed. And also, I legally can't sell the house to you guys. I don't think you understand that. Like, no one has changed that.
I, I just want to clarify that Downstreet did say that this property is eligible for acquisition. So we...
They didn't tell us that. And we have a contract, like, in the vault there that says otherwise. So that's why we are curious before this day to know who you talk to, so we could get that approval as well. And we can make an informed decision. We talked about this yesterday, even, as recently as yesterday. We wanna make an informed decision. You know when you told me I was a liar?
I didn't call you a liar.
You did call me a liar. So that's, we wanna be elevated, not purchased. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, regarding, anyone else regarding the North End Gateway Housing Project?
Tom.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Shade Pecor. And I grew up in Berry City on the North End, Second Street. And I currently, I bought, repurchased the house there in 2020 and moved back on Third Street. I believe one of my houses is one of the four acquisitions.
Yes, yep.
My question, I think it would be for probably Nicholas, is I heard you say earlier that the, the grant money had to be used within six years?
Correct, yeah.
So with the purchases, I understand the purchase of our house would come from that grant money. Would the redevelopment for future have to be done within that six years for that property?
I think it's just the acquisition, Shade. Yeah, yeah, because the grant application is only tied to acquiring the site and doing a demo of the site and doing sort of the environmental work on it. So, so yeah, yeah, it would just be, our application is strictly on the acquisition and preparing of the site. And so that we would meet that, that rule as soon as that's completed.
Second question would be, listening to, I didn't know much about the Prospect project and stuff like that, but I did get some, an email stating that, you know, that HUD is also gonna be willing to some of these acquisitions houses to help you find another affordable home. Would some of those homes in Prospect Street possibly be an option for some of us that are gonna be bought out on the North End?
I think they could be. One, one thing where, you know, when the city council was working on the Seminary Street project, one thing we've been talking to Downstreet about is having a preference for people at their, at their building site. So that's certainly something that we are, you know, certainly very committed to, assuming it's allowable under Downstreet's other grant funding rules. So I think having preferences for people who are flood-impacted is, is the best approach in that route. And certainly Seminary Street is probably your best bet, because that's the furthest along. You know, they're, Downstreet's applying for $2 million under this same grant program to finish, finish the funding for that project. And if the, if Berry City voters approve the bond for the TIF part of that project in November, there'll be, there'll be shovels in the ground in the spring. So that's what's most likely to be most readily available for people in your, in your situation.
Great. Just to conclude, I'd like to thank everybody on this council for the hard work that you've all been doing since 2023 and '24. I know personally, myself, I've been angry, I've been upset, but overall, I do appreciate everything that you guys do and understand what you're up against. So thank you.
Thanks, Shade.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Tom.
Anyone else under the North End slash Gateway Housing Project? Yes, counselor?
I have a question about Ms. Macris and the other people who own property on this map. Has everyone agreed to what is happening on this map?
Yes, counselor. So we contacted everybody in this triangle, except, we didn't contact anybody on Sixth Street. Everybody, Fifth, Fourth, Third, Second, and First, and below Beckley, was contacted. And, and we asked for consent forms for everything that we were doing. So everybody who is shown as a buyout here has filled out and returned a buyout acknowledgement form stating that they understand what they're getting into. The people who are highlighted, the properties highlighted in yellow for acquisitions have all, including Shade, for example, has returned an option agreement that is a, a template provided by CBV GDR. And the elevations, there's no property acknowledgement form. That's, that's basically a site project. So, so yeah, everything that's represented here on this map that you're seeing now, all these property owners have, in one form or another, acknowledged their, their interest in participation, so.
So with respect to the, Ms. Macris, who was here before, speaking before, is she on this map?
No, she's not.
Okay.
That property would be the next one up off of 16 Second Street. So that's why it's, it's a cluster for redevelopment.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I can't find that online anywhere to look at it. I can't really see it here. Is it, can you help me where it is?
It's under public announcements on the city website.
Any other questions or comments? Then I will, here, seeing and hearing none, then I will close the North End slash Gateway Housing Project Hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-18.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, resolution carries.
And I'm passing around the resolution for signatures, please.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I will open the hearing for the Downtown Housing 355 North Main Street Project.
Can I interrupt you before you open that? I'm sorry. I have a follow-up question.
On?
Not, not, it's just regarding people who are, were not included in the previous resolution. Is there still an opportunity at some point for buyouts, elevations?
They could cer, if there's a second round, that would be a possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
So the Downtown Housing Project 355 North Main Street Hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment? Or anyone has a question? Yes, ma'am. Right up, if you wouldn't mind, please state your name for the record and...
My name's Christine Morris. I'm a Berry Town resident and owns businesses in Berry City. So I'm here tonight just to discuss, looking for more information and have a couple of questions, thinking that I have two businesses in this property that's up on screen right now. One of my questions, I guess it's unclear to me, just from the limited knowledge that I have from what's been talked about in the last 48 hours. Thank you. Still getting information. This is me. With this $10 million, it's my understanding that some of this money is coming from disaster relief money that's being supported to build these units, from an understanding that I have from, from another context. With that money, there's two parts of it, looking at both the water, which came up with Mr. Stanek earlier, waterways, and how that affects this housing project that's coming up on the table. But also what's happening to the businesses that are associated with this property because that directly affects me. It's not clear to me at this point what's going to happen because the wording's been very vague, that there's proposed to be retail on the bottom and housing going up top. I'm not a retail space. I'm a business owner that's not retail. However, I'm in that same pathway where Mil and Travel, Off-the-Top Barber Shop, I own Rooted Yoga, and I own Braith and Bone Raye's massage. So I provide a service that we don't...
Well, I think, no, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but retail is a term that's being used very loosely. Let's just call it commercial. It makes it...
So commercial property on the bottom.
Commercial. So could your business be relocated to, to that building, to that commercial space? Absolutely, you could.
Okay. Because I've been through the flood. I've lost my business. I've relocated. I've rebuilt. I'm in this space right now because it is out of the current floodplain, which I know is lucrative, a housing project for everyone else involved. I love where I'm located right now. I have a great space. I have great business neighbors. I have a great landlord. All of those things are really good. I don't want to lose that. But I also am concerned with having this six store, or however many units, 40 to 60 units. And the facts that came out earlier about the 70% for low-income and subsidized housing, 30% market value, I'm not sure.
No, no, that's wrong. I, I have to stop you. That's wrong. 70% of, so were you paying, when Pat was talking about the income levels? So 70% of the housing units that are created, for example, I'll use the single person because that's the easiest example. If you have a single person making $60,000 a year, they can live there. They're, they're in that 70%. If you have someone, a single person, making $40,000 a year, they can live there.
It's up to that, that number.
Correct. It, it's part of the 70%. If you had a single person making $100,000 a year, they're in the 30%. So if you consider a single person making $60,000 a year, low-income, then I, I guess it could be referred to as low-income. So...
I'm looking at...
They have to, they have to serve that population. So let's just say, for argument's sake, they build the 40 units. 70% of those units, if you had a bunch of single people all making $60,000 a year, and these were all one-bedroom units, they could live there. They could all live there. Not one person making a dollar less than $60,000 would be living there, would all be single people making $60,000. It's not to say that's going to happen. That is, that's a ridiculous example. I'm just trying to make the point that those folks who talk about this housing and say, look, it's gonna be all low-income housing. No, it's not. 70, 70% of the single people served by these housing units will be able to make $60,000 a year and still qualified to live there.
Uh-huh. Thank you. With building these units in this property, are they going above the commercial spaces that are already there? Is the place being leveled and being rebuilt to hold that structurally in a different way? I know it's, I know it's considered...
The entire building's actually being leveled.
Yeah.
It, it, the building, it would not be the same building. The building that exists there, my understanding is the building that exists there now will be gone. These will actually be built on the corner. Do you know where the, the sign is?
So it's moving to the front.
It's moving to the front with the parking in the rear. So the...
I can show you here. So basically, as the mayor mentioned, this, the Lenny's and Walgreens section would remain. This, this annex or whatever, this piece here that, that you're in, Christine, Christine, right?
Christina.
Christina. This piece here would be demolished. And then the new building would be roughly built in this footprint right here, right on the, on North Main Street. So, and the commercial space would be right on Main Street, right there. It would be on the first floor. And the first floor would have commercial space, some parking, and then the, all the housing would be elevated above it.
And so in the meantime, in that transition period of demolishing one building and building another, which could take, you know, who knows how long, what's to become of the businesses that are housed in that space?
I'm, you know, the interesting thing is, we haven't yet gotten into the programming and sequencing. It's, in terms of the space and where the building is going, it's possible that the new building could be built before the old building is demolished. So what would, I mean, there would obviously be some inconveniences in terms of the existing businesses and parking, because you'd have a project in construction competing with it. But in terms of the timing for displacement, I mean, I can tell you, Christine, Christina, sorry, Christina, not Christine, it's, it's a ways out. I mean, just the planning, the programming, it's quite a number of months or years.
I know it's a few months out waiting for the funding, like a yea or a nay on that, if it's going to go through and be allocated.
And then it has to be permitted.
From that.
Both at the state level, both in, by public safety.
Right.
And by the city of Berry. There's a process there. You know, fast-tracking this, and there's a number of folks who are very familiar with construction, as am I, you know, fast-tracking this, I wouldn't even see a shovel going into the ground much before fall of 2026. It's just, it's going, and when I say a shovel going in, I mean, that would be light site work.
Small scale.
In terms of, yeah, building actually going up, they might defer the, they might defer on that and do the site work in the fall of '26, and then start building the building in the spring of '27.
And with these units that are going in above businesses, is there a vetting process to how these people are allowed to come in and stay in these spaces? I mean, how do we know? I, I love where I am, simply because I know who my neighbors are.
Yep.
I know exactly who's in my building. I know, you know, what's going on there at all times. I feel safe. I feel secure. I'm out of a flood zone, like it checks all the boxes. So then all of a sudden, having 48 to 60 people living above all these units, who knows how many people, living above you, that you're now entering and exiting a parking lot for me, it's usually at night and by myself, in downtown Berry, which isn't the safest feeling place when you're walking alone at night lately in downtown Berry. Those are all concerns that I have for my students that come in, my clients that come in, my instructors that I have, for myself. But now I suddenly have a ton of neighbors that I do not know. I don't know what the process is, like I said, if there's a vetting process for who's allowed to come in there or not. Is there someone with a felony, which can still get subsidized housing or anything else? Are these families, is there any control over that? Is there any way to understand or, or to have a little more background on who we are now opening our business space to and having tenants above us, which we've never had before?
Yes. The, the developer is DEW Construction, same company that built City Place here in Berry. It's not Downstreet. It is, it is not public housing. It is not Berry Housing Authority. It is DEW. It is a private entity that will own and manage the building. And, you know, I, I've known the company, I've worked with the company for literally a decade. And yes, in speaking with Don Wells, of course, there'll be a vetting process. There'll be credit checks. There'll be background checks. They'll check previous landlords, just as any responsible landlord would do. They will not, obviously, in terms of anti-discrimination, we're all bound by that. Doesn't matter what kind of landlord you are, you cannot discriminate against people. But in terms of following a... But in terms of following a government program, it's not that kind of building. It wouldn't be owned by Downstreet. It wouldn't be owned by Berry Housing Authority. It'd be owned privately.
So there aren't going to be grants given to anybody to come in, that then they lose those, then that adds to a whole other situation, and then there's like this whole wave of people coming in and out?
Well, and anyone can do that. Karen and I have Section Eight tenants who are among the finest people I've ever known. They have a voucher. And they live in our building because they're good, responsible people, and we vetted them in the first place. So the answer to your question is yes, someone with a housing voucher could live there.
Okay. And then my other question is, just considering the flood mitigation, this is the separate piece of it, but still affects my business, being that I've been through both the floods downtown, everything else, as we all have. Are there considerations for flood mitigation for the businesses with these new housing projects? And we already have a failing, you know, wastewater kind of situation going on with our current plant. Now we're making new connections to that with all of these projects that will in turn affect, you know, as a business owner, if my spaces are still in this building when this project's, when this project comes around, because I don't know what my lease will look like at that point, you know, when it comes end of the year to renew or anything else. But is that going to have an effect? Are there considerations being made with how all of the housing, how all of the wastewater, the new connections, our plant that is in need of work and has had violations in the past, for when we have the next flood?
Oh, sure. So as part of the grant application, we have to get a letter from the Regional Planning Commission, and they've asked questions about wastewater, water capacity, and we have ample capacity to take this on. So, yeah, and we've, you know, we've got a bond for the headworks that was passed by the Berry City voters. We've been improving our billing to Berry Town, so thank you for your contributions towards that. So I think our wastewater plan is in, is in good shape, and we certainly have the capacity to take on these new developments.
And we have a backup generator, or has that not been installed? I know there was something with the Stevens branch that had failed. There was supposed to be another generator put into place for that, in the case of the power outage, all of that.
The pump station is fully functional.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's everything I have for right now, for today.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
May I just, maybe the city managers, do you want to present the full project, and maybe my question will be answered, or do you want me to ask my question?
Ask your question, it's fine, yeah.
This, the city is not going to be the landlord for this building.
No.
DEW will develop the building, sell it to someone who will own and manage it longer term.
Correct.
What we are doing is providing...
Not necessarily.
Or they will either hold it themselves or develop and sell it.
They could. It remains to be seen. You know, we have a long way to go to push this across the finish line. One of the conversations that I've had with the manager is whether the City of Berry could be an equity partner on some level. City of Berry is applying for a ten million dollar grant. It would sort of bother me if we applied for a ten million dollar grant, someone built a building, ran it for a year or so, sold it at a ten million dollar profit. Because he got a ten million dollar grant, they walk away with ten million, City of Berry doesn't, walks away with nothing. That, I don't like that. It doesn't sit right with me. So we'll have plenty of opportu, so to answer your question, we will not own the building unless, unlike Prospect Heights, we are the developer. Unlike Prospect Heights, we will not necessarily own this building, but we may in fact be an equity partner. So that we may, if we're able to, it would be far and away my preference to be able to claw back some or all of that ten million dollars if it was sold later on in profit. I think that's, I think that's only fair, and honestly, as a conservative, that's where government blows it. They give all kinds of money away, everybody else walks away with a profit, and government gets nothing. No.
Understood. I just want to clarify for folks who are maybe not understanding that this is all in this...
No, we are, we are absolutely not, we are absolutely not going to be in the real estate business. Although, we are currently on Morrison Road, and that's working out pretty good.
Currently a landlord.
That's working out okay.
Not the standard.
Yeah, no, I get it. It's not the same. You're right. Yes.
Is there more information that you can tell us about this? I know there was an article in the paper, but since this is the first time some people are seeing this, maybe we could just have a little bit, some more details? That would be really helpful.
Well, we can, we can give you the background. I mean, we're not the current owners of the property. We don't represent them. We are not the developers of the property. We don't represent them, and we don't speak for them. I mean, I can give you the backstory. The backstory is that DEW has been having conversations with the current owners for quite some time. I reached out to DEW because, as I said, I have a decades-long relationship with them, and certainly am aware of their projects here in Berry City. I reached out to them actually for assistance in helping us evaluate Wabi Park. And I said, "Don, you know, you've done some good business in Berry, you currently own Berry City Place. Do you have some folks with some technical expertise that could help us?" And that's how the introduction was made. DEW then pivoted and said, "This Wabi Park project is, it's a small site, and you're really going to struggle to get any meaningful housing there. Hey, we've got this other project that we've been working on that we'd like to make you aware of." So, you know, it wasn't the City of Berry going to the Davises and saying, "Hey, sell DEW your project," that that wasn't the conversation at all. We, again, we reacted to a developer coming to us and saying, "We have this project that we have a conceptual model on. Wabi Park really isn't going to work the way you want it to work. It's just not going to provide the massing of housing that you want to see. So we'd like to present this to you." And that's how it happened. So that's why when you, when people think like, "Surprise?" Well, yes, it was a surprise to us, too. And what the surprise was, was that this conversation regarding this property had been going on for quite a number of months, and they actually had a conceptual model fairly well-baked, a competitive model, fairly well-baked, that we could present to this program. So it, it came on, you know, I mean, I could go back, folks, if you want me to put together the timeline with emails, I could do that. I don't think it was any more than two weeks, literally, since they first presented. I mean, it came on that suddenly, even to our team. But it was not something that we saw. It was something that they presented and had been working on for a number of months. So that's how it happened.
I appreciate that. Can you tell me, what is the ten million dollars for?
It's, so the, yeah, the construction of the project. So the project, the all-in cost estimated right now is twenty-nine million dollars, and that includes acquisition, which they're still currently negotiating, but are close to securing. It's an option, I should say. And then there's the construction itself, and of course, with that, there's the soft costs, like the engineering, the permitting, all of that. So DEW's estimate for the entire project is twenty-nine million dollars. This helps the math work on the, you know, the debt they would have to take on to make, to make it work as well. So it's...
And the resulting rent. I mean, the conversations that we've had, this ten million dollars is going to directly reduce the rent. It is not going, and that's how I feel about these grants, and I don't care who's doing the development. You know, that, that government is assisting you, and I'm going to expect to see your pricing model, and I'm going to expect you to show me that this ten million dollars went directly to reduce the rent for Berry City residents. I don't want to see it, look, everyone's entitled to make a fair profit, but I don't want to see this money going into someone's pocket. I want to see it going for the purpose for which it was intended, which is buy down the cost of housing. And even those of you who love a math exercise, do the math on, you know, sixty units and amortize, take thirty million dollars, amortize it over twenty-five years at probably a seven percent borrowing rate, because they're not a municipality. Look at the resulting payment, divide it by sixty, you know, it makes for, at thirty million dollars without that ten million dollar buy-down, it makes for an incredibly unafford, it looks, makes for about twenty-two-hundred-dollar one-bedroom apartment, which most folks can't afford. Yes?
I'll have a question. So these are rental units, not condos?
These are rental units.
Anyone? Am I missing anybody? Yes?
You like back-of-the-number envelope kind of questions. What do you think a project of this sort would raise in tax revenue? Well, back-of-the-envelope guess.
Boy, what is, what does City Place pay in revenue? Three-hundred-ish?
It does.
I think so. Three-hundred-ish? I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say around three-hundred thousand. And remember, this is within, this is in our TIF district, so we cannot, we can't do any, any sort of property tax reduction. We're not allowed to because it's in the TIF district. Amy has her hand up. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Amy.
Just making sure I heard that right. Is, is this one different than the other housing projects where Prospect Street and Seminary Street are now some Stevens Branch apartments? Those, the city money is more towards specific infrastructure, and this one is more a portion of the, the whole cost? Like, it's not specifically for water, wastewater, or stormwater, or that kind of thing?
It's, it's for the construction, really, yeah.
Okay. Is there much infrastructure work that has to be done for this one, or is it kind of already there?
They, they believe, not, not that much. We've, you know, we've, we've talked to them about, you know, we have, as we talked about when we did the TIF hearing, or discussed the Seminary Street project recently, we have a little bit of capacity left in the TIF district for perhaps another project, and we have a clock that's running on that. So, you know, we've floated it to them as, you know, if there's a TIF component that might help the project pencil out, that certainly be open to them, we'd have to go through the process for it. But in our conversations with DEW, they, they don't believe that there's a lot of public improvement component that, that's needed for, for this particular project. There might be some sidewalks and lighting and wayfinding, but, oh, they'll have to replace our Civic Center sign, so. But, you know, that doesn't, yeah, those aren't big dollars in the grand scheme of things.
We're going to put it on top, we're going to make them put it on top of the building, like the shit-coach sign in Boston.
One thing I wondered about with this is, you know, just looking at the aerial, it strikes me how much hardscape this is. It's a hard roof. It's a lot of pavement. And so certainly, I hope, as this gets developed, it would be an opportunity to have the stormwater done in a smart way, so it's not just all pavement and hard roof.
Good. Thank you, Amy.
So I'm assuming that Lenny's and Walgreens is being purchased also?
No.
So they're going to separate it?
Correct.
The Davises is still going to own that? Okay, so we have two properties.
Correct. They'll, they'll subdivide that property. I'm not quite sure where the, you know, they, they actually had some conceptual drawings that showed where the building, sort of a row of parking along the drugstore building, you know, along there. But for the most part, just imagine that that wing...
Is gone.
Goes away, and that land is, is sold to DEW. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any, so I'm going to close the hearing on the Downtown Housing Project 355 North Main and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-19.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the resolution carries. I will open the hearing on the Willie Street Bridge mitigation project.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, go for it. This is, yeah, just for reference, this is the exact same project that SLR has been scoping out for us. So this includes a buyout of five-seventy-two. The buyout, just to be clear, is not, is not funded by this grant. The buyout is funded by FEMA. It's already underway. That buyout will happen whether this project goes through or not. But yeah, this is a terrific project. You've heard a lot from SLR. This was one of our top three from the river process, and so we're very eager and excited to try to get this funded through CDBGDR.
Questions?
Has Willie Street Bridge ever flooded?
It sure caught a lot of debris and sent water other, in other places. Willie, the Willie Street Bridge in, in and of itself has never failed. It just serves as a constant debris rack that sends water cascading into other neighborhoods where we don't want it to be. Yes?
I would just also add that continual context for this project is, if it ever does fail, we cannot get to the water treatment plant.
Correct.
In addition to residents who live in that neighborhood not being able to get in and out. So this is a, this is, it cannot fail.
We actually do have a contingency plan for that. We would remove some guardrail up on the Belt Line, and we'd run a bulldozer and...
Off-road it a little bit. I, and that does sound like a certain kind of fun, but...
Yeah, considering, considering the location of the bridge after the flooding, we, we looked at that and, and actually spoke to Secretary Flynn, Secretary Joe Flynn, about how quickly, if we needed to, how quickly we could make that happen. So, fun fact, we have had the discussion.
I love a contingency plan, but...
Yes.
So the other part of that is, when it did flood, they did shut down the bridge for several days, weeks. My husband works on the other side of that bridge, and so I heard about it every day. So no granite trucks coming in and out when you don't have a bridge. So, yeah, it's...
And a trestle being gone is going to flow even more, we'd assume. The trestle's not far from there.
Yeah. Because the trestle in and of itself would catch debris, now, some debris. Now the trestle isn't there to catch debris, so in theory, all of the debris that was caught by the trestle is going to end up on Willie Street, on the Willie Street Bridge. So, good project. In the initial review by ACCD, they really like this project, so we have high hopes for it. So I don't know if there's any other comments or questions. I don't see any, so I will close the Willie Street Bridge mitigation project hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-2020.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, resolution carries. Counsel, I'm going to open the hearing on the Harrington Avenue Floodplain Mitigation Project.
And just for, briefly for the members of the public watching, this is another one of our river process projects. This is the Harrington Avenue Debris Rack redesign plus floodplain expansion. Again, just like Willie Street, the buyouts associated with this project are entirely funded by FEMA, so they're not part of this application. And those will happen whether this application is funded or not. But again, terrific project, seeing really good mitigation value for the city as a whole, and again, very excited to have an opportunity to apply for funding for it.
And once again, a project that was very well-received in the ACCD comments. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to this project? I don't see or hear anyone, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm familiar with that because I, Steve McKenzie and I worked on the original that we put in. Are we taking another house and widening?
We are.
Couple.
Yeah, there's a couple. There's actually four properties that are part of the floodplain expansion, the four on the end of Harrington Avenue. So Harrington Avenue will just, it'll just be the two houses that are on the corner of Maple, will, will remain there. Everything else will be part of that expanded floodplain. And then the idea with the debris racks is you can sort of see it, they're small in the picture, but to, now it's one continuous rack, this will sort of spread it out to let the water snake through.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'll just ask, so I'm slightly concerned with how we're going to make this much larger in width, and then at the end, it's just a very small, narrow canal, and how we're not, I mean, I know that this particular project isn't addressing that, but I think that we're kind of creating almost a problem, because if it, if it's not done appropriately like we had seen with the reactive drain now, just makes it even worse. And if we're just going to make it wider and add more water to it, it just makes me really concerned that we're going to try to put a lot of water through a tiny little garden hose, shall we say. And I'm not really sure what the unintended consequences of that are going to be. And I just have to get that off my mind and just put that out there, so we're, we're just being aware of the potential risk here.
It's a fair question. I mean, keep in mind, in none of the storms, twenty-three, twenty-four, eleven, we didn't I mean, keep in mind, in none of the storms, 23, 24, 11, we didn't create water in any specific area of the city. The water came in, the water left. What we did do in the 23 flood, the racks that we had actually worked really well.
Too well, yeah.
Almost too well, and what they ended up doing is pushing the water out into the neighborhood. So the water, literally, there was so much debris that came down and was caught by the racks, it pushed the water out into the neighborhood. So what we're doing is, rather than push the water out into the neighborhoods and flood all those homes, we're creating a channel so that, assuming the debris racks work as well the next time, the water will actually have a place to go. But in term, but I, I, I hear your question, it's like, okay, but then we still have that narrow little channel. There's going to be water flowing in that little, you know, the, the same volume of water, whether we do this or not. It's water that comes in from the Gunner Brook and Plainfield. You know, do the math, I don't know, a hundred thousand gallons a minute is coming in, it's going out, whether this is there or not. Yes.
And if, if, just expanding on, that's absolutely right. And the other, the, the effect of this, the goal of this is to slow that water down, right? So you have that same volume of water, but instead of rushing quickly through this channel to that small opening, it's gonna wind, right? And that's gonna have the effect of slowing it down. And then what you do here is you, you sort of excavate. This becomes lowered land so that when that water does want to move through here, and it is, if it, if it does speed up, it has a place to go and rest before going into that little channel. So it's, it's, it is a little counterintuitive, but, but making it, widening this area actually has the effect of slowing the water down, and then the debris rack should have the effect of snaking it through this area, which also slows it down and, and makes it more possible for it to, to go through the opening as it exists.
Uh, Mr. McKenzie? Uh, you need to come up to the mic or people can't hear you. Well, then, keep it to yourself.
Very quick comment. The objective of the project is improved and remanded.
Counsel, Guston?
I was just gonna, earlier, I was gonna say what the city manager had said about widening the Flood Plane has nothing to do with the volume. We can't change the volume, that is nature. It's, it's slowing the water down before it clogs and stopping the debris. And a follow-up question, which is that we have some 2024 intakes on the edge of this Flood Plane. Does this project account for those? Are they not there yet? We'll get them in later.
They're, yeah, they're not, they're not there yet. If they move forward, they would, they would have the effect of expanding that Flood Plane, which again is, is added benefit, and, and they would be on the opposite side of the Harrington Avenue, they're on the Brook Street side, so it would, it would be only beneficial to the, the impact of this project as a whole.
And I would add too, that one thing I understand from this project is that the line that runs parallel to Maple is also gonna be a berm that will also ease some of the water coming up and up over the sides of this Flood Plane that we saw in 23 and 24, more in 24 than 23, actually.
Correct, yeah.
And the last piece is that we commissioned the hydraulic and hydrological study for exactly these questions, so that we can run this all through computers who are much smarter than me, frankly, about like, okay, if we make these adjustments, and that this project was an early candidate for that hydrological modeling, in order to prove to the, um, the scoring of the hazard mitigation grants, that it would in fact positively, would in fact make a positive impact on flood mitigation overall, rather than, than make it back. So I understand, like, looking at that, the, the concerns can come up, but all of the science is pointing us towards this being a dramatic improvement for flood mitigation in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. I will close the Harrington Avenue Flood Plane Mitigation Project hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-21.
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, resolution carries. Thank you very much. I will open the hearing on the Storm Water Planning and Design Project.
Thank you, Mary. And I think for Counselor Guston's benefit, I, I explained this right before you got here. We had to make adjustments on the budget side, so this came down from a million to 250. Realistically, since these were planning grants anyway, and it's designed and engineering, we were probably shooting a little bit high on the million anyhow. But we had to lower these to, to keep Willie Street and Harrington Avenue fully funded, keep the housing projects fully funded, and to, and stay within the cap that was, that established for the application, which is 10% above what we noticed for the hearing. So I, I think you hadn't heard that. So this is 250, at this point, adjusted downwards from the last time we discussed this project.
I just know my frustration with this project is not the amount, it's that they wouldn't let us do the work, and that they're requiring the planning grant. I just feel personally obligated to say that every time this one comes up. That's all.
No, I, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, in terms of the planning that we're trying to do, the prioritizing that we're trying to do, I mean, how do you, no one else in central Vermont is doing it, and it seems like we're being penalized for trying to be thoughtful about how we spend grant dollars. And I'm grateful for the fact that Counsel Wazak has pledged to give us at least $10 million in mitigation.
That's right. Counselor Wazak, I can't go to second.
Counsel Representative, well, you put, you'll get, you'll get to be city councilor again if you pull that one off. You know, but seriously, it just...
Don't...
Yeah. I don't blame you. But it, it just seems, yeah, I'm, I'm disappointed too. We joke about it, but it, it's not a joke.
No.
I'm pretty disappointed about it. So Counsel, any questions about the Storm Water Planning and Design Project? Any questions from the audience? Then I will close the hearing on the Storm Water Planning/Design Project and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-22.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the resolution carries. And with that, Counsel, I will open the Potash Brook slash Courier Park Planning Design Project Hearing.
Go ahead. Same, same thing. This is, uh, focused specifically in the, in the Courier Park neighborhood. Again, $50,000 reduced to an amount that we would normally see for a, a design engineering project, and adjusted downwards from 500. I think 500, as I said, probably high, on the high end anyway. 50 is probably a little bit lower than we wanted to go, but this, this helps us make our budget work for, for the, the housing and infrastructure, which in my estimation, we're, we're more important to get fully funded at this juncture. So, uh, reduction from last time, but still hopefully a competitive project.
Questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none. I will, I'm sorry.
I just have one quick follow-up with the, and apologies that I wasn't here for the discussion about the amended budget. Does the amended budget include the installation of a debris catcher, or just the planning?
Just planning and design, yeah. This is another one where, in our initial pre-application, we were told that it's, it, it wouldn't, they wouldn't fund the construction without having those design engineering. Yeah.
Sounds like next year's hazard mitigation grant.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I will close the Potash Brook slash Courier Park Planning Design Project Hearing and entertain a motion to approve the final Resolution 2025-23.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, resolution carries. Counsel, we will move on. Thank you very much, everyone who participated, as well as Counsel. Big step. Now, uh, you know, we're on to Cincinnati. That's a Patriots thing. No. We're, we're on to the 30th of September and the submission of the CDBGDR grants. Once again, I just wanna really thank our team, uh, who has just worked tirelessly on this, you know, Nicholas, Jim, Pat, Janet, so many, so many, yeah, thank you, so many others. And Josh, thank you very much for all of your time, and, yeah, you know, what a hire. Josh came along, right guy, right time, in terms of being able to pull this off. So we just, we really had an incredible team. I mean, when we would have our planning meetings or our, just sort of our coordination meetings, you know, they just left me in the dust. I mean, they, they, they were just so far ahead of everyone. So Josh, thank you. Thank you to the team. It was just a, a real great effort. So Counsel, we need to, speaking of a great effort, we need to approve the Berry City Long-Term Redevelopment Plan. Representative Wazak and I love serving on committees with Counselor Guston, because she ends up doing the work, and we can just kind of sit there and, you know, talk about how the Patriots are doing, how the Saints are doing, and... So, um, thank you, Counselor Guston. You did a, you did a great job. I mean, we all participated in the planning and the comments and sort of setting the table, but in terms of actually drafting the report, that was really all Counselor Guston, and we, we appreciate it. So Counsel, that was in your packet. We need to approve this. They, they sort of loosely referenced it in the DR application, that, you know, you need to have this long-term development plan. So obviously, because they referenced it, we want to make sure that we actually have one. So that was suggested by the city manager, so we set up about drafting one. And what we decided is that, much like our Long-Term Flood Recovery Plan, this is sort of a document that we're gonna revisit every once in a while and try to keep handy and, you know, try to keep living and try to keep it breathing and changing as the city changes, because there's a lot of really good information in here. So, uh, if you're inclined, a motion to approve this would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or comment? Yes. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say thank you. It, it's, it's great, and I haven't spent a lot of time with Amanda, but I could tell she wrote it.
Well, I'll take that as a comp. Thank you, I think.
So, well done. No, it's just, it's, it's great. Thank you.
Very interesting.
Yeah. No, very well, yes.
I also want to applaud Counselor Guston, that this really goes into detail with history. A lot of amazing things that, when you look through this, many folk wouldn't even really know a lot about this unless you understand the history very. So thank you for putting your historical spin on that, as well as just really making it pointed and just, great job overall. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to brief...
Yes.
Really? Yeah, go for it.
I just would also be remiss, she couldn't be here tonight, but Tess Taylor as well, not to take any credit away from the way this report came out because of Amanda, but Tess, Taylor, and Janet Shatney were great at pulling together. You had a really strong starting point for this. They both put in a lot of work before we even got to that first meeting. So, just because she couldn't be here tonight, I just wanted to name Tess and Janet as well for being instrumental in the final project.
As well as Dave Sickel from, from the Planning Commission. I mean, you know, once again, it was a team effort, but, you know, in all honesty, we would all move through and say, well, it should have this, and it should have this, and we should do this. And Counselor Guston would frantically take notes, and then magically, like the report fairy, it would be in your inbox the next morning. So, yeah, I just appreciate that. You always work hard. I can always count on you. The city can always count on you, so thank you.
I would just add, it, first of all, I want to just place context for folks that this was not, this was a, a summary of all of our previous planning. So we're not, we're not necessarily going anywhere new with this redevelopment plan for anyone listening in. And for my perfectionist nature, there were two reports I couldn't link before it had to go to press. So if the motion maker is comfortable with the friendly amendment, that we will approve this with the addition of links to a, a couple of the reports in the last page, I will make those updates. One of them, I was gonna call you Josh with the strategic plan, and I just ran out of time, so.
So that will be, so the motion will include that? Is there any other discussion, folks? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel, we'll move on to Item J. On the agenda, this is to approve the purchase and sale agreement for 143 North Main Street. Once again, Counsel, you had this, this was in your packet, so you've had ample time to consider it. Yes, Mr. McKenzie?
Good evening. Steve McKenzie, President of Berry Area Development Corporation.
Josh, yeah, Josh Brown.
And we have other directors here, Alforey, who's the Treasurer, Robert Lord, who is immediate past president, Carl Rinker, who's a Director and interim, uh, interim Executive Director while working for Josh. David Sickel, and I think that's it in terms of Directors. But I just want to take, uh, just a few minutes of your time and report to you on the fundraising campaign, the 143 Main Street Initiative. And I'm delighted to report to you this evening that the fundraising portion of the campaign has been successful. We have raised over eight hundred, slightly over $800,000. And that is actually the revised goal.
That deserves that.
That's the revised goal. We've had a couple of successes along the way, not the least of which is raising the money, but the other is that through periodic negotiations along the way, the purchase price has been reduced from a million dollars to $775,000. The, the additional $25,000 is for addressing campaign expenses, is to cover the costs of the BRELA application and the Phase 1 site assessment, which has to be redone before we're doing that on behalf of the city. And then the balance, which is probably in a $15,000 to $17,000 range, will be provided to the city as a carryover, if you will, to help defray the, the costs of property taxes that will be lost, at least for the first year. Property taxes on the site are about $13,200, so, so we can contribute $17,000 at least for, for a year. So that'll help reduce the impact of the transition. We're currently in the process, as you know, with the agenda, of negotiating the purchase and sale agreement. The draft that you have before you has been reviewed by the city attorney, the city manager, BADC's, BADC's attorney, and I had a little bit of input. It has been reviewed by the, the owner's attorney, and it is now in the hands of the owner, and I'm expecting to hear back any time, hopefully, as to their acceptance, or if they've got any comments or whatever. But I think we're very, very close to hearing back from the owner. I think the objective this evening is to get authorization for the manager to sign the, per, a purchase and sale when it's ready to be signed. I, I, in doing this, I want to express appreciation on behalf of BADC for the foundation contribution by the city, the $400,000 contribution. That was key to getting this whole campaign launched. Without it, we probably wouldn't have gotten off the ground, and it, and not only did it add the financial piece, but it added the credibility for the campaign. So that's, that's a huge, huge contribution. Very, very appreciative of it. There are, there are a lot of other people who, who need to be recognized, the donors and so on. I'll do that at a different time. Interestingly enough, we've had donations from the faraway Florida, Massachusetts. I think these are folks who have ties to the city. You can be more than a campaign event. I think as much as $15,000 in anonymous donations. So, um, there, there is a lot of interest out there. And I guess I would, I'd also like to acknowledge, uh, just a couple, everybody from the board participated in one way or another, helped out. Carl Rinker was, is, has been instrumental in helping move this campaign along. Sarah Field, who's done all of the legal work on our side, pro bono. Without those two folks, we probably wouldn't be as far along as we are. And I think the last, I'd also like to recognize and acknowledge Dave Delcor, because Dave took an interest in this initiative right from the beginning. His periodic articles kept the campaign alive and kept it out there, and in the last month, I think he did a couple of articles, and every time he did an article, we probably received another $10,000 to $15,000 in donations, so his, his support was very helpful as well. So with that, I'm hopeful the council will authorize the manager to sign the purchase sale when it's ready.
Super. Anything else? Any of you gentlemen want to add? Uh, I guess, uh, thank you. It's a bit of an understatement. Uh, you know, it's not very often, um, what's your next campaign? Heck, if you can, you know, if we can kind of double our money, you know, we, we, we provide 400 and you raise, uh, you know, another 400. Gee, you know, that's a model that the city could employ. Uh, it, it just goes to show, it's why I've always been so proud to live here. You know, I talked to other mayors and I always have for decades, um, talked to the mayor of Montpelier about trying to raise money and about, you know, and mayors will occasionally say, you know, it's just impossible, you know what I mean? And I think, not in Berry. I mean, the one thing that makes me so proud about my fellow Beresians is that people who really can afford to give will give. Um, and, you know, this is, you know, am I surprised, Steve? Am I sitting here surprised? This, this was a big lift. I, I'm not really surprised that Berry pulled it off, but it was a big lift and we pulled it off.
We received donations from $50 to $50,000, literally. That's the range of donations we received. And I need to acknowledge one of the first who was really behind the scenes, but Amy Hudsonson, who is the development director for Northeastern Regional Medical Center. But Sarah Field's sister, then she got, Sarah got her involved. She's, does, uh, development work on a full-time basis. She got us headed off in the right direction. But without her assistance, we probably wouldn't have been successful either. So I need to.
Ginger Cloud, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Um, one, congratulations, huge. So way to go. I know it was a lot of hard work and a big push and, and you guys have done a fabulous job raising money for the city and, and making improvements. So thank you so much. Um, one question I'm kind of curious about is what, what are the costs anticipated for demolition, remediation on the site and who's responsible for those moving forward?
Sure.
And can you speak into the microphone too? You guys online? Thanks.
You're very welcome. Um, the, the, the property is actually going to be, uh, the city has accepted assignment of the sale of the property to the city. So at closing, uh, this will not pass through B A D C's hands. It will go directly to the city. There's a lot of reasons for that, not the least of which, uh, doing so, uh, saves about $35,000 in property transfer taxes. But the, but the other principal reason is that B A D C is a 501(c)(3) organization doesn't, uh, isn't eligible for a lot of the grants that the city will be eligible for to help move the project forward, just as, uh, was done for the City Place Project. And I keep saying this is, uh, the City Place Project Part Two. Uh, the, the scenario is exactly the same. Wayland's Brooks Street, uh, Brooks Drugs Store, uh, property was, uh, bought by, by the city, having received a $400,000 grant to buy that property. Uh, then the city found the money to, uh, raise the building, uh, level the lot, prepare it for development. And then, uh, the second year that the mayor, uh, and I were in office, we issued requests for proposals and, uh, received three great proposals from developers and, and, uh, selected Dew and the rest is history. It's going to be that same process. And as part of the memorandum of understanding that we, uh, we wrote, co-wrote with the city, uh, the city has sole responsibility and authority for the development of that property. The city will, uh, eventually decide, working with a developer, uh, and I'm, I'm sure through significant public information campaign, will solicit input from residents and so on, uh, to help determine what will go on that site. And the costs are to be determined. It's, uh, just as you're talking about the, the property and the Davis property, the City Place Project, I think was like $18 million. I mean, this is a multimillion dollar project, so it's, and the timeline for development is probably three to five years. But the, that would never happen if ownership of the property, uh, can't be transferred to somebody else who has an interest and a desire to develop the property that isn't there now. And, and if the ownership doesn't change, it will stay that way for another five, 10 or 15 years.
Thank you.
Got it. Doesn't that mean it's like so up to the, this city to, to come up grants or whatever? Find, find funding to, or sell it to a developer that can then do their own profit tier?
Well, I think, I think that's the whole idea. Eventually it would be to turn, just like we did with Dew. I mean, turn the property over to a developer for a dollar and let them, uh, the benefit to the developer is they don't have to sink half a million dollars or a million dollars into, uh, overhead costs to, to prepare the site for development. So, you know.
It's kind of like subsidy, it's just subsidized, and the Berry community essentially subsidize.
I'm sorry.
Of property. Essentially Berry City and the community have subsidized the purchase of a property to then get developed.
Well, hopefully, uh, it will be little, uh, if any.
Steve, if I could just put it in context. Um, I was mayor, Ginger, when we purchased the Brooks Drugs property through the Neighborhood Stabilization Grant Fund. And, um, heard a lot of complaints about me, about how, uh, I was making developers rich. And at the time, do you know who we purchased that property from? Steve Lewenstein. Does the name sound familiar? It's on this purchase and sales agreement. Same guy. And I heard a lot of arguments about how all the city was doing is making irresponsible property owners rich. Today, uh, I don't know if you heard us talking about it earlier, we collect $300,000 a year in property taxes from Berry City Place. And we have for, I don't know how many years now, it's been there for a little while. 10 years from now, we will have collected $3 million in property taxes from Berry City Place on a $400,000 Neighborhood Stabilization Grant, uh, program. My hope for 143, I love downtown housing. I love mixed-use housing. I like seeing people walk downtown and I like seeing people walk in safe neighborhoods. So my hope for 143, uh, the city will be looking very aggressively, uh, for demolition funds, for brownfields funds, to ready that site for development. And then we'll be very quickly looking for a developer who wants to develop, I hope, housing in the downtown.
Great, thank you. That was really helpful. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment. So, uh, Council, so let's, yes.
I found two typos in your agreement. Did you want me to share those with you now?
The motion is subject to final review and approval by the city attorney, so.
Okay.
You can send them to me.
So, so let's talk about what can go wrong at this point, because I'm all about Plan Bs. Um, you've had, um, a number of pledges. Some folks have given their money, some folks have pledged. You may not collect all the money. That could go wrong. We don't think that's going to happen.
I assure you, we will collect.
No, so I just want to let the council know, a couple of things, and the manager know, a couple of things, I'd like to have you approve this this evening, please. What I've said to the manager, there can be no exposure to the city of Berry. In other words, if something goes wrong, the city isn't, uh, if B A D C said, hey, only, you know, my job is to protect the city, our job is to protect the city. If B A D C said, only kidding, only kidding, it's not, well, we can sign this with the comfort of knowing that we have no exposure, that the city of Berry can walk away. And if we do walk away, it just means that B A D C doesn't get their $10,000 back. Obviously, you, you've upheld your end of the bargain and as long as you continue to do that, which I absolutely have no concerns about you doing, we're going to uphold our end of the bargain and we'll be at that closing. So, but I just let, and the other thing is I asked the manager before, this is subject to edits, obviously, before he executes it, please circulate it to the council and give us at least overnight to look through it. So if any counselor sees something that is concerning to them, you have my word. If you want to pump the brakes and hold a special meeting, I'll do that for you. So we're, like I said, we're just trying to keep this thing moving along, recognition of the stellar effort. So a motion to approve the purchase and sales agreement with those understandings would be in order.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Sorry. What, the inspection contingency, I mean, what does that entail in the contract?
It's got to be in good shape, right?
Basically a standard legal clause in the property.
By the buyer, which is Berry City now, correct?
Yes, but that's, that's, we, we're, we know we're buying the site as is.
Okay.
And we know it's in pretty dire straits. But the, but the, the, either redoing or completing, I'm not quite sure which. I think it has to be a new one because the one that was done before was now three years old. So it has to be a new environmental site, phase one.
That's kind of what I thought.
That, that will, frankly, nothing has changed on the site. So I expect it, nothing's really going to change in the report. Um, but, uh, you know, it's that, i- if this were, if this were, uh, private buyer, private, buying a property from a, you know, private seller, uh, there might be something that comes up in a.
A lot more, yeah.
Inspection that you, that the buyer doesn't want to agree to. We don't expect any of that to happen. We know it's a dumpy site, uh, but, uh, but that's just really standard language. We don't.
And did you have a question, Councilor? No? Yes?
I did, which is that no one let me have dynamite for the trestle. But I feel like there could be a sledgehammer party involved.
So.
Once this goes forward.
So considering, considering, because I'm very familiar with that building and its impact on the neighboring building, which I used to own, and they share a common wall. So you may want to talk to Pete at AR Market.
The back.
Before you go messing around with a wrecking ball.
Sledgehammer.
Or dynamite, you might want to talk to Pete. And Donnie and Liv. Where, I really couldn't be more thrilled. Honestly, I, I literally questioned at times, you and I would have conversations over the years, I really questioned whether, whether this would even happen in my lifetime, just because of how difficult it had been. And, uh, it took a lot of firm resolve on the part of counselors and to those who supported it, thank you, because not all of the council at the time did, and it was, it was a tough vote. And, um, Representative Wazak, thanks for hanging in there at the time like grim death, uh, because you were our swing vote. And, uh, you know, and all of that, so if you think of all the levers that had to be pulled and all of the puzzle pieces that had to fall into place, um, two price reductions from Steve Lewenstein and Jeff Jacobs, never would have believed that one.
One other, one other point, just the, not, the catalyst for this came from the 2023 and '24 floods and also the strategic planning by Area Development. I say the number one complaint, but certainly the top two, one of the top two or three complaints that you, that came up in the forums after, uh, after the floods, uh, the process, the complaint you hear on the street, uh, every day is, what's going to happen with a damn building and why isn't something doing about it?
Exactly. Amy Galford?
Yeah, I had a little couple of hearing at one point, but, um, did Steve say it was going to, you guys were going to apply for umbrella grant? Um, that's like, that's one of the reasons for the city. Did I hear the term umbrella? I wasn't sure if I heard that right for the brownfield.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I wonder if maybe it would help answer part of Ginger's question that she had. Um, I got familiar with what that is because Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District, um, got one of those grants. So talking about that, I heard about that on the board, but maybe that would help answer some of the, the liability, um, question to that that came up to give people like, someone who knows can give like a two-minute explanation of what the umbrella program is.
Well, it's a, it's been a long time since I've been involved in umbrella, but it's a liability protection, uh, program which protects the, uh, buyer of the property, in this case, the prospective buyer of the property, uh, from the liability of the cleanup of any contamination that might be there. I think that's specifically stated.
We've actually, I've actually used it personally a number of times. Uh, Amy, it's a program. You submit a work plan, uh, you know, so you have the phase one environmental site assessment done. Depending on those results, an engineer submits a work plan to the Agency of Natural Resources. Um, many times a work plan may be, uh, look, it's a contaminated site. We know it's a contaminated site, uh, which this site likely is. And I suspect the corrective action plan would be as simple as, uh, A and R saying, hey, if you build something on that site, certainly if you build a residential, um, unit on that site or ser-, or residential units plural, you have to have a vapor barrier. It can be just that simple. And there are times when it can be a little bit more complex where the agency will say, we want you to map, you know, we see there's a plume there, we don't know exactly where it is, we want you to map it. Uh, so it's, it's a wide variety, but Mr. McKenzie is exactly correct. What that would do is, uh, when you run a property through the umbrella program, as, as the buyer, um, you're shielded against liability for any environmental cleanup, not for any environmental costs. You know, we, we've put properties through the umbrella program and had to spend $50,000 on, you know, testing, mapping and, and things like that. And then you, so you basically get a, um, closing letter from the state of Vermont and you're good to go from there. Okay, Council, I believe there is a motion, uh, and a second that has been made. Everyone understands the motion. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
We are approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay, Council, we'll move on to item 8K on the agenda. I asked the manager to put this on only because we're, we've been hearing a lot about drought conditions. Uh, you know, currently there's literally a ban statewide on burning. So you, if, you know, if you call the fire department, you say, hey, I have a burn permit, I'd like to burn, and they say, no, don't get mad at them. It's actually a statewide thing. We've heard a lot about severe drought conditions in different parts of the state. Um, thanks, Al. We are, we're not there yet, um, but I just, I, I thought it would be just a good kind of public service announcement for the manager to just kind of go through where we are. So.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to share this. Um, and I've been pleasantly surprised that, as I see other communities, uh, going through some water conservation measures, including, I think, Montpelier as recently as last week, um, that I'm expecting the call from Jake at the water plant. I haven't gotten it and that's, that's fine by me. Uh, but just to give you, um, and the public some context, um, you know, we, we have, we have a drought management plan. This isn't, um, you know, this is a process that's, our water levels are monitored, uh, regularly. Um, they're monitored regularly even when we're not in drought conditions. Um, but we have, you know, we have benchmarks that trigger specific actions. And fortunately, um, we haven't, we haven't had to, to get to that point yet. Um, so the, you know, our, our water source at the Dix Reservoir, uh, is considered full at an elevation of 1,280 feet. Um, and then at 1,274 feet, so that's six down, six feet down from full level, is when we start going, triggering, uh, water conservation measures. Um, and at 1,275 feet is when I'm notified, um, that we're at that level, because then we're, we're a foot away, um, and that, that gives us time to communicate any potential conservation measures that would be coming up. As you can see here, I shared with you in the memo, um, reservoir levels for the month of September, um, they've all remained above certainly the water conservation measure of 1,274, and they've all remained above the notification level of 1,275. So we've been hovering right around the 1,276, um, foot mark. Uh, on the 18th, the reading was, um, 1,276 exactly. Um, we've fortunately gotten a little bit of rain. Um, we've, uh, I think it's forecast to get a little bit more even. So I think we're going to probably come out of this okay without having to go through any water conservation measures that are outlined, um, in our, uh, drought management plan. Those measures for, for reference would be very similar to what you're seeing other communities do, you know, uh, reduction of unnecessary use of wat-, not, non-essential use of water. Um, primarily what that means for most people is watering of your lawns and gardens and that type of thing. Um, so, yeah, so I think we've been fortunate. Um, and I think we're probably, given where the forecast is looking, we're probably going to come out of this on the other side without having to take any, um, of these conservation measures this year. Um, and, you know, and, and when I, when I speak to the water plant, um, you know, they say that we're typically low this time of year anyway. Uh, historically, probably 23 and 24 wasn't the case, but, um, historically, we've always, it's always ebbed downward this type of year. It's normal. Um, and this year with the severe, I think it's good, good news, even with the severe conditions statewide, um, we just. statewide, we just haven't hit those, those danger levels. I think the other thing for people to take comfort, and one thing that I would notice that was my indication that things were okay, is we did a lot of flushing this summer, and so the guys are out flushing, that, you know, if you see them out flushing, you can, you can know we're okay, water levels. That, that would be one of the first activities we would stop if we were seeing problematic signs, but when the guys were out flushing, I drove, drove to work, and if I see the guys flushing, I'm like, okay, no, not expecting a call from Jake today. So, so that was also one of my, my hints as we went through, that we're, we're doing okay on the water level, and, like I said, we're, we're looking to come out on the other end of it without having to ask our residents to take any conservation measures at this point.
Questions? Comments?
I have, I have like a million questions, but I'll miss myself too. I, I don't know, for some reason, this is just really fascinating for me. Full at an elevation of 1,280 feet, what, is there like a version of this plan that what happens if it gets too full, like if it hits 1,300 feet?
We release water.
Yeah.
We, we drain it.
Okay.
Kind of like your bathtub.
Cool.
Yep.
Who gets to flip that switch?
We do it with dynamite.
Yes.
So we blow it up. I liked that one. No, we, we actually have a way, we, we can control.
Yeah.
When in 2023, we actually released water.
Yeah.
To keep it from, from getting too full, so.
Correct.
That actually does happen, and the, you know, one of the reasons, and even though we're not currently at conservation levels, it doesn't mean that we couldn't be. It's great that we're at the end of the summer. I know, Councilor Hillgarten, you love your gardens, you worked really hard on them, you're going to keep, and I get it, Karen loves hers too, she's going to keep them watered. But if you could avoid, you know, we should still think about our water use a little bit, because just because we aren't doesn't mean we are, and the other thing that I'm mindful of, that we've actually had to do before, we've actually had other communities coming here filling water buffaloes, coming to the city of Berry, because they, because they're literally conserving to the point where there are folks in their communities whose wells have run dry and they're out of water.
Yeah.
So it's still something, you know, even though I'm thankful that we're not at that conservation level, it's still something to be really mindful of, because we, you know, before this is over, we may have to help some neighbors. Yes.
Just want to say that I have actually limited my water to new plantings and food.
Look, there's.
Never want to.
We don't want, so, we don't water, so what we gave up is, now that summer's over, we don't have to top off the pool, the water's not evaporating from the pool, so you don't have to wash your car every week.
Wash my car?
Yeah.
Wash? Wow.
Not in summer.
Well, that's the discussion in my home. Karen looks at me with the same expression on her face and says, wash my car?
Right.
Now, she'll, she'll water the plants, so, but just, you know, be mindful of it. If folks are watching, just be mindful, not so much for what I expect the conditions to be in Berry, but we, we may have to help some neighbors out, and they may need some, you know, because, believe it or not, drought conditions can continue throughout the winter.
Indeed.
You know, even when snow is on the ground and it's not melting because it's too cold, you can actually have a drought in the winter, and a well can run dry in the winter, so. So Nicholas, thank you, thank you for just keeping that on our mind and, and putting our minds at ease a little bit.
Excuse me, winter and spring.
Upcoming business, council, you know, other than keeping busy, I mean, I, as Mayor, and keeping busy, will be meeting with other municipal leaders, other people, and, and the Washington County State's Attorney, to talk about the state of the justice system, the court system, how we can improve things. It's not going to be, matter of fact, it's going to be a closed meeting, because we'll be having folks from Northfield, and Berlin, and Berry Town, and Berry City, and Montpelier present, and I asked for a closed meeting, or suggested a closed meeting, just so everyone can speak frankly and not worry about, it's not, it's a session where I expect people to check their egos at the door, I expect them to be on their best behavior, I will insist that they be respectful, but I also want people to be able to speak freely. And if there's a question they want to ask, and, and they don't want to sound dumb, or, they say, well, I thought it worked like this, I, I want them to be able to have a free discussion. So we'll be doing that in the next week or so.
I think it's October, yeah, October.
Yeah, in October, we'll be, early October, we'll be doing that. So we, so working with the manager and the police chief, and, so we've been arranging for that. And other than that, I'll tell you honestly, all of my focus has really been on these DR grants. I will be thrilled to see them go. They're, they're really, they're really, so that's why we have it. So, so we'll regroup at our next meeting, please come with your ideas, we've got fall coming up, we've got budget season coming up, you know, we've got to hit this housing initiative hard, you know, the DR funds are not, you know, we've got to be thinking to the next round of DR, so if you could just, I, I would appreciate that, if you could come with your ideas. Councilor Ruth, you got anything for roundtable?
I went to a get together last Thursday night, Americans for Prosperity, it was very interesting, very informative, it was excellent.
Thank you. Councilor Spaulding?
I went to the Granite Festival on Saturday, and if you haven't been to the Granite Festival, you're missing out. If you haven't been to the Granite Museum lately, you should go, because there's a lot of great exhibits. I was at a meeting this afternoon, there are 60 tour buses coming into town specifically to go to the Granite Museum on, over like the next month or so, and so I thought that that was fantastic, if we could just get them to stop downtown and spend all their money, that would be amazing. And last, but not least, this is my last time telling you about Evicted, and look, I'm done. Book club is tomorrow, the Justice, Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee is hosting a book club with the Aldrich Library tomorrow, Thursday, 5:30 at the Aldrich. We are discussing Evicted, if you haven't had a chance to read it, you may not get a chance to read it before tomorrow, but still join us, it's okay, you can be a part of the conversation, we'd love to have you. Thanks.
Councilor Bruce, your turn.
I don't know if anyone saw, earlier this week, there was a piece on WPTZ 5, Hope Cemetery, Eileen Glander and Heather Milne Ritchie took Ben Prochet through the cemetery, it's an awesome piece, I think it's still up on their website, so if you haven't seen it, just take a minute and check it out.
It is, just go to their website and search Berry, and it'll pop right up, and they did a great job. Councilor Gussel?
Pass.
Councilor Hillgarten?
I just wanted to report back that the benefit concert that was held for the warming shelter at Good Shepherd Church raised $1,300, $1,300, which was, and the church was, that was a very good thing.
Nice job. Councilor Deering?
Two community events, I as well attended the Americans for Prosperity event, and that was really nice, listening to current representatives and senators, really talk about the last session, just kind of review things, talk about things they liked, things they didn't like, it was a nice locally driven conversation. Second one, we have Unspoken coming to Berry City, it was a Christian group, music group, they'll be at the auditorium, we approve that this evening, tickets are $4 for general admission, so it's a great opportunity, there'll also be some events in the parking lot, but just one of those things, we talked about bringing things to Berry, so this is one of those events, so if you know people, if you'd like to go, have fun, love to see you there.
Fantastic. So, it's been quite a couple of weeks in America. You know, violence, regardless of your opinion, regardless of your principles, regardless of your stand, being the victim of a violent act is never acceptable. That said, I don't think we, as individuals, ever have to compromise our principles. You know, we're different, those of us in this room are very different, we would have different views on things, but it doesn't mean that we can't be civil, you can disagree and still be civil, you don't have to resort to calling people names, you can have an intelligent conversation with them. I work really hard at being civil, trying to be civil, sometimes people don't like what I hear to say, hear what I have to say, so they think I'm being less than civil, but I just want to let all of you know, if I ever fail to hit that mark, because to look at a woman lose her husband, to look at children who are one and three years old lose their father, that is never the answer. So if I ever fail to hit that mark, if I am ever less than civil, it reminds me that we all need to do better, and we all can do better. If I ever fail to hit that mark, don't hesitate to remind me. Karen does it all the time. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We need a quick executive session.
You do? Okay, we need a, what are we going into?
Oh, you're so close.
Oh, real estate. So we need a, we need findings, please, we will be discussing real estate.
Motion for findings.
Thank you, and a second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll need a motion to enter executive session, the manager will be joining us, that'll be it?
That'll be it.
Okay, and you anticipating any action?
No action.
Okay, and no action is anticipated. Okay, council.
So moved.
Thank you, and second. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, council will be in executive session in just a moment.